Call the meeting to order. Uh, can I get, uh, can I get a motion that the agenda for the November thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, committee of the whole meeting be adopted as presented? Counselor Bevan, all those in favor? Can I get a motion that the minutes of the October twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, committee of the whole meeting be adopted as presented? Mayor Sahara, is that motion? All those in favor? Great. All right, moving down to the executive office. Um, we have amending the fees, rates, and charges by law, number twen- two thousand twenty-two fourteen. Um, and is that, who will be presenting this one?
Uh, Kayla Parsons will be speaking.
Kayla, you'll be speaking to us?
Um, I don't have much to add from the memo that's been provided. Um, most of them are just some general updates that have been discussed previously. And then, um, in appendix D, there's been, uh, large changes, just to make things a little bit easier, um, for the general public when they're coming in to get their development permits. But if you had any questions specific to those, I would probably have Mr. Bahagi answer those questions.
Any questions?
Uh, yeah, Madam Chair, through to administration, I do have a question regards to, um, the cemetery. Do we have any comparisons on what we charge compared to other municipalities? Uh, my main concern here is, um, I see that there is an extra surcharge if they, uh, they have to open in, in the wintertime. I find that a little bit unfair for, for families. Obviously, you don't choose your time of death, so, um, I'm wondering if that is a normal, uh, procedure, or if, uh, if there's something specific to Edson?
Madam Chairman, through to, uh, Mayor Sahara. Uh, yes, actually, the, in, in here, uh, some of it was rebalanced to address, uh, the actual cost of staff time. Uh, and one of the things you do see kind of reoccurringly within different cemeteries is a different fee for winter openings, as well as additional deaths. So that was something that was requested by our, uh, Parks and Recreation Department, who actually does the physical work. Uh, and they noted that, for example, the difference would be twenty-four hours' notice, uh, in the summer, but between certain hours when the ground's frozen, we require seventy-two hours' notice. We have to go out and heat the site before excavation. Uh, so it does actually have additional costs to the town. Um, and so this is reflective of that timeframe, or that additional timeframe. We have notified people that it does take longer, uh, for quite some time, but we haven't adjusted fees, uh, until this proposal.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Bevan?
Uh, through the Chair, to administration. Um, on the, uh, Public Parks User Fee page, I think it might be page seven. Um, can, can we specify which public parks that they're being referred to for the event measures? Or if you can, like, exclude certain parks, if that's the case? I, I know further down in our agenda, um, it does mention that, but, um, on the rates and fees, it's not really clear, I suppose.
So I would ask, uh, Mr. Diselteau to address the park fees.
So basically, um, so it is mentioned also, which we'll discuss later in the meeting, in the, um, basically, in the, in support of Parks Public Use by law. But as for the, um, for the parks that were going to be mentioned, and they're the parks that, um, are in there. And basically, it's anywhere in the town that's zoned as Parks and Recreation. And it also includes, uh, Kinsman Park, which isn't zoned, it's zoned as Community Services, but it functions pretty much the same as the rest of those parks. So that's essentially what it is right there. And there's also another point that we'll get to as well. But it basically talks about if it's like for a small group of friends or family, but it's not really a public event or anything, that those fees won't really apply to it. So we'll address it more later in the meeting, but hopefully that answered it for now.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Through the Chair, on your advertising in the arenas, um, have you checked, uh, if that's comparable to other places around here? I thought at times it was three thousand dollars for an ad in there. These seem awfully low to me.
Mr. Diselteau?
We, uh, we generally look at fees for this type of thing in the region. And the last information I had was that we're fairly, you know, within the ballpark of what other places are charging.
Okay, 'cause I, I know through Alberta Teachers Association and HIT, it was going to be three thousand dollars, like, and that was quite a few years ago. So they must've gone down substantially.
Counselor Rinton?
Uh, further to Mayor Sahara's comment, I, um, I also, thank you for bringing that up, Mayor. Um, I wasn't aware of that, or I didn't notice that. And I would be in full support of, um, having the summer burials a little higher to subsidize the winter burial. So that they're both on a even, uh, even rate. That doesn't make sense to me either. Thank you.
Counselor Bevan?
Thank you. Through the Chair, to administration. Uh, on our diamonds overdue that, um, we're making a change on them and that. I know that, uh, we were renting them out. We had to take four diamonds for a price of four hundred dollars at one time. We could take a one diamond for a hundred dollars and that. And one of the companies that did put a due on out there, had to take four diamonds, pay four hundred dollars. They only used one diamond. Somebody else came in, wanted three diamonds, ended up using two of their diamonds. And I believe they paid again. Is that going to be a hundred dollars per diamond for, say, a family, or a dude that want to use it? Because that's almost like, kind of, double dip into me if you're gonna, you know, somebody's gonna pay twice for to use one diamond, and that company or family is not going to use all three diamonds.
So this year was kind of, uh, a litmus test for us. First time we were managing Vision Park. Uh, we created the, uh, the format that we did to get us through the year, and it was somewhat based on what the Kinsman had done in the past. Uh, moving forward, we are doing an in-depth analysis of similar facilities in Alberta. What the region is doing for renting diamonds, and how that looks. We'll be preparing this over the next month and a half, and then presenting that to council in the, in the new year.
So if, if you don't go a hundred dollars per diamond per user, and they gotta take, say, a minimum of two, and they don't use it, then I hope you're not going to rent it to somebody else for another hundred dollars and make two hundred dollars instead of a hundred.
No, I, I'm not sure we're going to be moving to that type of format. Uh, but it's going to be consistent with what other areas are doing.
I know we look at other areas, but this is our area here. So, uh, I know we always check with other areas, but I think, you know, we have to look after ourselves here and our residents here, and the people who want to use our diamonds too. And we'd just like to be fair to everybody that wants to come out to use it.
Absolutely, and, and our biggest concern is the service delivery. We also want to protect, uh, the infrastructure that's there. And we want to recoup a fair percentage of what it costs to maintain that facility.
Then on that same thought, too, then you could just, say, charge them for, uh, a fee, uh, what do you call it? Put seven hundred dollars down, in case you destroy something and that, you don't get your damage report. You wouldn't get it back, so instead of renting, like that, off their fee or whatever, something like that.
Okay. Counselor Bevan?
Uh, through the Chair, to administration. On the repsol page, uh, repsol place page, um, there's an extra lifeguard listed there for twenty-five dollars. Is that, um, like, a flat rate for per event, or per hour, or, um, how do we distinguish that?
So, uh,
Perhaps you should come to the front.
Are there lots of other questions about it? Um, depending on the type of event, if it's a birthday party, depending on the volume of people at the pool for that function, if the slide is functioning, uh, we have to bring in extra people just to make sure it's safe. Make sure the angles are covered, that you can see people in the turbulent water, and those types of situations.
Okay, so that's an hourly rate then, or?
Correct.
Okay.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Okay, through the Chair, uh, to administration, I believe it would be. Uh, under bulk water, where you have, uh, bulk wastewater, three dollars a cubic meter. Will it be that same price for the company that's, like Cascade, that's planning to use just so much water?
Uh, Madam Chair, through to Counselor Wilkinson. I am not, uh, familiar with the company that you have just named. So I'm not sure, are they, uh, going to be using our water from our lagoon system? If they use water from our lagoon, which is our treated wastewater, they will be charged three dollars a cubic meter.
Through the Chair, can I have one more question? All right, what do we charge right now for refrigerators, et cetera, at the landfill site? It's twenty-five dollars on here, are we charging that much now? Because I think you put it up too high, and then people just dump them on the side of the road, which makes just a double problem.
Madam Chair, through to Counselor Wilkinson. We haven't changed the, uh, the price for, uh, accepting, uh, refrigerators for a number of years. We haven't seen, uh, an, uh, an increase in, uh, refrigerators being disposed of in areas that shouldn't be there. Yeah, exactly. So the reason that we charge for, uh, refrigerators is because the town of Edson must remove all the Freon. So we contract that service out, and there is a cost that's associated with the removal of the Freon.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions? All right, uh, I just had, uh, the same comments that the mayor had mentioned around the cemetery. Um, I had some concerns about those prices being different. Um, I don't think we get to choose when our time comes. Um, so I do like the idea that Counselor Swanson said there, um, in spreading that a cost across. And then my only question around that was, with the winter period, um, and, or the overtime, are families made aware of when it would be considered overtime? And known so that it doesn't go into overtime, and they're not charged that extra cost?
It was previously provided for on handout sheets that we had as information for families, but we did not have that clearly articulated in our fees by law. So one of the inclusions here that's highlighted is, is clarifying, uh, what days or what times go into overtime.
Okay, perfect, thank you. All right, um, does amid need anything else from us before moving on?
Just as long as, um, everyone's happy with all the other changes. We're okay.
All right, moving on to engineering planning. Uh, RCMP Centennial Park, parking memo, and I believe this is you again, right?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of council. Uh, there was an inquiry, uh, provided to me through the CAO with regards to parking at Centennial Park, uh, at the museum. Uh, and with, uh, an issue of people being there after hours, or parking there and pursuing other, other, uh, commercial pursuits, either going to the mine, or perhaps working at adjacent businesses. Uh, and so we started looking into the history of this issue. Uh, this is something which is not new to us, and in fact, has actually been addressed, uh, by the, uh, museum, uh, at the Galloway quite often in the past. Uh, and we do have several agreements which actually designate parking for adjacent businesses, such as the daycare, uh, on this site. As such, we've remodeled it in the past, uh, but apparently we still have parking issues, um, that are being raised. So without being able to, um, require people to give us information, or, or picking on specific users, um, we've reviewed different options we have to ensure that we're meeting, uh, the requirements, uh, for our agreements, uh, which are still subject to change, should council wish to pursue that, and is given as an option. Uh, while also ensuring that we have enough parking for our primary use, which is the museum and the park, the public use. Um, and then looking at different options on how to maybe address those issues with the adjacent businesses. Um, so in looking at that, since we do have a requirement to provide parking under a current agreement to the, uh, daycare and EFC, um, Edson Friendship Center. Uh, and we do have, um, some consistent use by employees of other businesses, though I'm not saying, uh, that's, that's individual uses, decided by those people, not necessarily directed by their businesses. Our recommendation on this, uh, is that council either consider remaining as a status quo, uh, which is a, a clear option. We don't have to do anything. Um, but as you are the ones who are receiving, uh, the complaints and the issues of interest, resolving it, uh, might work best by looking at administrative measures, by restricting parking, putting up signs that state that there is only, uh, parking allowed within that lot for a certain period of time. Uh, and then having, uh, our CPOs actually monitor the site, and find, uh, people who are regularly, uh, breaking those rules, and then choosing to ticket based on recurrence, uh, and using a high level of discretion. Uh, that doesn't require, uh, any capital costs, uh, but it does require costs related to, uh, staffing, and then, of course, some bylaws, uh, and other administration. The other one, of course, being the status quo, uh, which is, it has not necessarily hit the level that, uh, sparks a larger concern. That's a matter of opinion, I guess. Uh, then there's also going to paid parking, which will encourage people who are parking there, and then going to, uh, a mine shift, or working at other places, um, to actually pay for their parking. It doesn't necessarily stop them from using up the parking lot. Uh, it does then require us to undertake certain administrative measures, actually, uh, collect for the parking ticket anyways, even if they're, if they're not paying for their parking. Uh, but that is an option we have looked at and can pursue further. Uh, there is the ability for us to look at the one business which has, um, employees regularly using the site, such as, uh, the adjacent shell, and looking at either providing for additional parking, uh, over the park. Uh, I'm not sure that I would necessarily recommend, uh, paving over a park to put in a parking lot so you can access the park. Uh, but that's, uh, an option which is, of course, available to us. And the other one is that we can actually just simply, uh, send out letters and, and encourage people, uh, to either utilize parking that currently exists, that's not on our site, um, and taking that very soft approach. So at this point, uh, I'm unaware about the best, uh, direction to go, uh, without some council input, and we're seeking that direction.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Counselor Bevan?
Through the Chair, to administration here. I see back in February twenty-eighth, two thousand and thirteen, there was a letter sent from Edson District Historical Society. And in here, they had, uh, uh, one, two, three, four, five, or six different solutions here. And I'm looking at F on here beside the daycare center here and that, that, you know, maybe they could put an angle park in there. For them, would, would take us, take them out of our parking spot. And also, with the mine being there, they do have a place down by the airport where they were parking, and it's never been used now. I think they've given up that rate, or something like that, right now, or whatever. Can they not go back there and use that, it was plugins put in there, lights were put in there for them and everything else? They tried coming in the Boys and Girls Club parking lot, but they had to use it, so they kind of asked them to leave. Now I think they're in Walmart. So it's kind of just moving around these areas here and that, and, uh, you know, I think, you know, we have to do something here because it does get very congested there, and people that want to come. And then we have tourists who want to stop in. They can't get in there, they drive by, and that, they, they don't, there's no parking on the road either, because the line on both sides of the road here is stepped in front of the daycare. So I think, you know, we have to do something on this, uh, you know. I'm not sure what it is, but we have to look at the solution.
Um, Madam Chair, through to all of council. I just wanted to, um, advise council that the parking lot that Counselor Bevan has spoken about, so the parcel of land that was adjacent to airport property, had been under leased by the mine, but Westmoreland has released their lease holdings on that. So it is no longer being used by the, by Westmoreland.
Where's Sahara?
Uh, yeah, through to, uh, administration. I think, uh, where we need to start is, is to have that conversation with, with the mine, to find out whether or not their employees are still utilizing. Um, and politely ask them to find alternatives. Um, this has been a longstanding issue. Um, I do like the option of, I know that a number of the recommendations that were made in two thousand and thirteen by, uh, the Historical Society, a lot of that stuff has already been done. I do like the option of that parking lot E, which is in our map, um, to provide some additional parking there. I think that's a possibility that we, we should consider. Um, I'm certainly not in support of, um, charging for parking, uh, and of costing us a lot more money to, to do that. Um, but we may need to look at restrictions, uh, providing the museum with parking passes or something for any, uh, longer-term events. But, uh, I think that's a conversation we'll need to have with the Historical Society, and, and to address those concerns. I think that, uh, based on the information provided here, the, the daycare and the, um, early learning center are not really the, the major contributors to some of those issues. Because most of the people that are utilizing the building drop off and then, and then leave, so.
Yeah, and this, uh, Madam Chairman, just as a piece of information for all of council. This area is a loading area for parents, so this is where they are consistently dropping off and picking up, so.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Through the Chair, um, I really like option five, expanding the parking lot. We discussed this last council as well. Even if we went north, there's sort of a natural berm there, so we could get a parking lot in, which wouldn't really affect the park as much. And it would encourage people. We want to encourage tourism, we have artists, uh, with all the materials in the, visitor center there, and I think there's probably people who can't find parking to even go in and get them. So I think we have to do something.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Through the Chair, to administration, um, I, I would also, I would like administration to look further into parking lot E on the map, for the Chamber of Commerce. Um, I do like the idea of one-way traffic through the parking lot. I, if you go the wrong way through, none of the angle parking makes sense, and it just causes confusion. Uh, I'm not in favor of paid parking, but I would be in favor of maybe time limits, like two or three hours. Um, not heavily enforced, but that would give our bylaw officers the opportunity to target people that are abusing the system and leaving their vehicles there for twenty-four hours, or, or, or longer shifts. Yeah, thank you very much.
Counselor Bevan?
Uh, through the Chair, to administration. Um, I'm also, uh, not in favor of the paid parking. Um, I'm lukewarm on the restricted parking and, and, uh, having the, um, uh, bylaw officers go through there. Um, I, I'm just not sure how many people are parking there long-term. Um, uh, having that, more information on that would, I guess, maybe change that idea. Um, I, I, I'm kind of in the favor of the E, the suggestion that was there, um, with expanding the parking lot. But I, I honestly don't know if that would be enough, uh, because you're adding five stalls, but then you'd be taking away the street parking, so, um, it wouldn't be actually adding five stalls. Um, has the option been explored or discussed with maybe adding angle parking, um, further along fifty-six there? It's not really in the picture, but, um, it's not, I, I would, I would say it's not a really heavily used part of the park, maybe. Um, would, would that be something that maybe the, uh, museum would want to explore, and, and see if that's, like, still favorable to their operations? And then, like, it would, it would buy you more space, or, it would buy, it would buy you more parking stalls, um, for, for going into the, the effort of, of doing that. Um, or adding more stalls on the, the Sobies, and on the east side of the park there, angle parking there too. I know there's a parking lot there, but it's, it's a heavily used park, and I, I don't think that adding five stalls is enough to get a solution long-term.
Anybody else? Um, I also would like to, um, see the, the addition, um, and just see some numbers around what the cost would be. Um, if we were looking at E, um, and, uh, how easy would F be to do? Would that be something, so between E and F, uh, the cost, and then looking at other alternatives? Um, I agree, I think, uh, even just putting in the one-way direction, often when you're there, um, there's less availability because of poor angle parking. Um, so I do think some of that. Um, I would be in support of doing some of the restrictions, in the sense of not so much the enforcing, but giving our bylaws some power if there are people that are regularly, um, there, and allowing the other businesses to have passes, um, to ensure that that could be done. Um, also not in favor of paid parking. Um, I think that's it. Anybody else have anything to add? Counselor Bevan?
Through the Chair, to administration. Also, on the other end of the block there, the veterinary clinic is now there. So when they had parking up there, for example, the people that bring their animals in are now parking there. So the cars that they used to park there are also now coming down and parking in the parking lot, here at the, at the chamber, and stuff like that. And they're going to wherever the shell or wherever and that. So some cars are coming off the street because they can't park up by Wildings, or by, uh, the, the other store up there. They're coming down into this parking lot here. So we have to look at it, you know, very seriously right away.
Do you have enough information from us to move forward?
You've selected several options we will follow up on.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the Trans Mountain, and I believe Ms. Reddy, this is you too.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, Trans Mountain has, uh, looked to proceed with its construction, uh, schedule. They have secured already previously several temporary workspaces, as well as right-of-way alignments, uh, with the town, and with other landowners within the town. In looking at their construction company, they have evaluated the right-of-ways they have already negotiated, uh, and the equipment they would like to use, uh, and to ensure that they're not creating more liabilities on their sites, um, by trying to fit it into a smaller space. They have approached the town, and as well several other landowners, to seek additional, uh, temporary workspaces. So there's, uh, only one very small increase in permanent right-of-way that they're seeking through these agreements, but primarily they're looking for just temporary workspaces. Uh, those temporary workspaces, the additional funds they should be providing us is about fifty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars, uh, based on our previously negotiated rate, uh, per area, uh, and the, the loss of use that was negotiated through those programs. Uh, I have also indicated that we will be seeking for additional contract protections for additional depth, as we look at the, um, north of Hillendale, um, as they had not previously thought that we might be developing those lands in the future. So we're making sure that there's no impacts to our future intentions to those lands. Um, as well as, uh, previously within Vision Park, it was not clear whether they would impact the playground that's there, and we will be seeking to have them put within their contract negotiations that they will, uh, be replacing our park, uh, with a similar park, a new one that CSA approved, uh, should they have to remove it in that case. Uh, with that, we'll note that we have attached, uh, all of the maps which show the additional workspace. Um, it shows both the, in the red, the, uh, proposed right-of-way, uh, which is existingly negotiated, uh, the proposed workspace beside that. And then on the very outside, uh, I believe usually it's hard to see clearly with the colors here. Uh, in blue is the additional workspace that they're asking for. Now with that, this is located north of our lagoons, our lagoons are located approximately here, um, which then goes into private lands. Then we see Vision Park, uh, as we can see, they're asking for essentially a straight cut across for expansion of that workspace, right here. If you're wondering where, um, the trees and the play space is, it's approximately in this area. Then as we continue north along Hillendale, I'd indicated that we have some concerns with regards to a potential road crossing here and here, so that we can ensure that we're addressing our future development interests without having to look at their infrastructure, uh, or be impacted by their infrastructure. Um, they did ask for expansions coming right up to the edge of these homes, uh, on our property. It's a marginal increase in, in area, the larger workspace is right here, so they can properly address, uh, this work going underneath the road. Uh, as well as they have asked for similar, larger workspace in this corner, and then continuing it all the way to the south. Uh, this is one area that was contentious, my understanding is in the past, which was the removal of trees. Uh, so this blue here represents, or this area here represents what was already approved, and has already been given agreement. The temporary workspace increase is just a little bit along the top, and a little bit more down here. We do have a tree replacement and remediation plan that has been drafted and sent to us for comment, and that's been sent to our Parks and Rec Department for comment. It basically states that they will be replacing, uh, trees in a similar locations with breeds, um, in, in concert with our, our Parks Department, to make sure that we're getting, uh, what we think is the most suitable. And so with that, we do have certain ones like this where there is no change, um, but, uh, they've been included as information, just to ensure that, uh, you know, that we have addressed that issue with them. So with that, we are simply providing this to you as information, um, as we are proceeding with previous motions on, what is appropriate rates to be charging, and appropriate alignment for that pipeline, unless you have other direction.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Through the Chair, um, can you explain to me how the additional depth will relieve some of your concerns, uh, in Hillendale?
Additional depth means that if they're placing this on, well, essentially, we, when we extend the road over, we'll have greater frost penetration, we'll have greater weights going on. The further that goes down, um, uh, the more stability is provided, without us having increased costs for crossing that infrastructure in the future.
Counselor Bevan?
Uh, through the Chair, to Martino. Uh, do you know, uh, you mentioned the trees at the, um, at Vision Park there by the playground. Um, are they clearing those trees then, or do, do you know if they plan on boring underneath them?
I think initially they intended to be able to save the trees, but based I think initially they intended to be able to save the trees, but based on the work plan that's been set out by their contractors and the additional width that they're asking for, I believe that they, they now believe that they will be required to remove them.
Consul Bevan.
Through the chaired administration. I know previous consuls came back and forth to us about three or four times, and they always, you know, wanted to have more trees gone, more trees gone and that, and we kind of sit and all come up with a different plan, whatever, and that. And it was never, ever mentioned way back then of them replanting these trees and stuff like that. And I know the residents up there that back onto it, you know, didn't want the trees removed either and that. So how much more are they going to take of the trees out of here and that? Are they going to open it right up so that the residents now will be looking out onto the pipeline with 20 years before the trees grow up on them and that? And we had also said that they didn't need their workstation right alongside it. Couldn't they back up, you know, come out of feet, put it there, and then lay a pipe in there and keep going and that? That was one of the options too we had asked.
Well, I do, I can state that they have provided us with a draft tree replacement and remediation program, so that they're aware of all the trees that are within their pathway they expect may be removed, and then what they, how they would replace them to ensure that they're addressing that concern. With regards to what they can and cannot do, I've got a lot of expertise, but it's not in preparing major transnational pipelines, so unfortunately I will not comment.
And I guess with that, did they stipulate how big the trees are they're going to place? Because they're just going to put little wee seedlings in the ground. It doesn't do anything for the residents up there at all. If they're going to put, say, a six-foot tree in all the way around there, or an eight-foot tree or something like that, it'd be better for, you know, residents up there to have some kind of greenery up there.
Madam Chairman, through to Consul Bevan. I can review the plan to see whether, what their expectations are, what their proposal is. However, I did not go into that level of depth since I referred to our Parks and Recreation Manager. But if you are requesting additional information, we can definitely provide that for the next committee meeting, including a copy of that draft plan if you'd like to review it in depth.
Yeah, I would like the additional information and that, and I would specify too that we don't want any pine trees put out because of the pine beetle. Let's put something native to the area here that's going to grow.
And that was my only comments to you, is that when they did that clear cutting, it was a substantial change. And that's my only fear there, is just that one stretch there in the parks. And so just, I would also like to see the remediation plan for the trees, and just have a little bit of detail on how fast they're planning to do that, and that it will be not 20-year-length trees to grow, because it is pretty bareback there now. All right, any other comments?
Moving on. Moving on to corporate services, budget presentation. I believe that's, is it?
Right. Okay. So presented to you today is the, what we call the public presentation budget. This is all the information we talked about at the Budget Workshop on November 3rd, in a presentation that we're going to send out to the public today after this meeting. So it has the 4.5% budget or tax increase. There is a difference between the two incorporated within that. The Citizen Budget Tool is actually ready to go, will be up tonight. So that's timed actually really well with this meeting as well. So the citizens are going to be able to go on and sort of just look at if they wanted less service with this, more service with that, what they would actually do to their taxes as far as increasing or decreasing it. So that tool will be available to the public as well tonight after this meeting. Any questions on anything that you saw?
Chris Sahar.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is, with that increase, how would that impact an average home? So say a $325,000 property or a $425,000 property. I know that Hinton is undertaking their budget deliberations starting today, and they're looking at a 6.8% increase. So just wondering where we are, how that would affect residences within our community. If we actually do the 4.5, obviously we're in the beginning stages of our process here, so.
If you had a, if your assessment was 325 in 17 and also 325 in 18, so no change whatsoever, be an extra $80 a year in your taxes, in your municipal taxes. This is the only one that we can control, is the municipal taxation. Say it was a $425,000 assessment, it would go up about $105 for the year for the four and a half percent.
Consul Wilkinson.
Through the chair. I'm not sure if this was straight last time when we discussed it or not with the Evergreens requisition. Is that, it's the same number as last year, so have you got one yet, or you're just using last year's number?
Yeah, we're just using last year's numbers at this time, because it's the same as 17, as it is for, sorry, for 18 as it is for 19. So we will amend that once we get those figures in the new year, and also once we get our assessments in the new year, because right now we don't have our assessments until towards the end of February as well. Around the same time we get the school requisitions and the Evergreens requisitions in. So that will come back. They won't affect the municipal part. It would still be $80 or $105, but those ones may affect that as well, judging on the requisitions that we get from the province and from Evergreens.
Vala, through our two chair to administration. Is there any way that we can really publicize that it costs us $5,170.33 to operate Repsol Place per day? I think that even surprised me. And I thought, really, people need to know that, that they have that service offered for their taxes as well.
Madam Chair, through to Consul Wilkinson. I think by releasing the public presentation budget, that's exactly what we want to do. So it's laid out in a format that's easier for the public to understand, and they will see what you are seeing. They will be seeing that as soon as we release it. So, yeah, I agree. Those are, those are very good.
I really appreciate the way it's set out now, very clear. So thank you, Sarah, whoever did that. Thank you.
Consul Sarantin.
Thank you. Through the chair. I agree, the format is very colorful and easy to read. I would like to see even very early, maybe even before the table of contents, a page that says this is a proposed budget. There'll be multiple readings at council. There's going to be a public open house. There's been lots of opportunity for the public to comment and to influence this. So it reads right now as a done budget.
I could go to the header page and actually change that to 2019 proposed budget rather than budget. We can do that, I think, fairly easily as well before it goes online. So that, we can do that for.
But as well, that, do we have, I don't know if we have the date set for public consultation or public input, but if there are dates set already, we could put that right in page one.
Yeah, we have. Obviously, this is going out as we discussed at the workshop, and Citizen Budget is based on these figures. So we have our next committee meeting on the 27th of November. So that would be when we would bring back some of the information we may have gathered from Citizen Budget at that stage, and that would be when we would next sort of delve into this. So I could, well, it's, I could, I could see if there's a way to do that tonight, or I can amend it in the next couple of days.
Consul Beyer.
Through the chair to administration. I appreciate the layout. I think it's user-friendly for people to go through. I did have a couple questions, though. Something that I get asked about a lot is transportation on page 14. Is there any way that we can write on there that we, this year, or, you know, if we continue to do so in 2019, about the street swooping of the second and fourth Ave, and just like a timeline of how often we do that, if we do it once a month, whereas in previous years it wasn't happening, just to have that information out there as well. And then on the protective services, where I think it has a little blurb there about the, I'm losing it here, the photo radar. Is there any way that we can put how many police officers are, like, I guess subsidized through that program? Like, I know it lists the police officers later on, but I think there was a number, maybe five was mentioned at our budget meeting that maybe, so people know, right? Because I mean, you know, when you get the ticket in the mail, you're not really appreciative of it, but when you realize the contribution it gives to our town, it's like, that really makes a big difference in our budget situation. So those are my comments on it. Thank you.
Consul Sarantin.
Further to Consul Beyer's comment, I know you, you would like to get that this right away, but I would love to see our benchmarks included in here. We're holding ourselves accountable to those benchmarks. I think it'd be good if the public knew what we were striving for, where we're trying to make improvements, where we're already achieving our benchmark. If we buy into it, it'd be very helpful for the public to buy into those as well, and having them right beside the budget number is a good place for it, in my opinion. Thank you.
Consul Bevan.
Through the chaired administration. I don't like the 4.5 myself either, but I know we've got to tighten our belt here and try to get it down at least into the three-range, 3.5 or something here. Well, I'm kind of wondering, I know it's coming up later on here in our council here, but I'm looking at some wages here and stuff like that, and I don't know, maybe it's just me, but I think, you know, we've got to look at our management team and that. I think we're getting a little talk heavy here in some of our hiring programs here and stuff like that. You know, I know we have two interns here, and the government pays for a part of the interns and that, and we pay a certain percentage. But if we didn't use them, that would be a savings there, would bring that down considerably, probably around a 4% or maybe even lower than that. I know we're one of 20 in the province that's doing it. Not everybody is doing it. I know they add value to us, but I also think that by having them, I feel somewhere departments are not pulling their weight and stuff like that, that they're getting them to do a lot of their own, their work and stuff like that in their presentations. And it's nothing, no slight to Michael here and that, anything at all. But we were paying, you know, 4.5%. We started at 6, we did come down. We did cut some stuff out of the fire service and stuff like that by 5,000 here, took 50,000 off there and that. And I think, you know, we have to look at this again, and we have to really go through it again.
Madam Chair, through to Consul Bevan. The purpose of the public presentation budget is not to rehash the workshop figures, but council will absolutely have an opportunity to revisit the figures. So if council comes back, so on November 27th, that's when we're going to be, so we're going to, we're going to have received some public feedback, and we're going to bring that forward to, for council's consideration. And if council directs administration to come back with a 3% budget, we will do our very best, and we, we will achieve that. This is council's budget.
Thank you. Ms. Sahar.
Yeah, through, thank you, Madam Chair. The interns, I think, look, provide us with a tremendous amount of quality work, and they're, they're an asset to our organization. No doubt, we're going to be doing some modifications as we go through this process, and all of us here are taxpayers. You know, that's like a 4.5% increase. The fact remains is that municipalities right across the province are facing enormous pressures. I look at this budget, we're about $76,000 in additional cost, just thanks to the carbon tax. So thank your NDP government for that. You know, we have all sorts of, sorts of cost pressures. Our employees do tremendous work for us. It's easy to pick on management. We are reducing our management from nine to, or seven to three or four through our changes, and we will see cost savings there. We're working extremely hard to, to find savings and, and look at opportunities to reduce costs. As I mentioned earlier, Hinton right now is looking at a 6.8% increase. They're, they're just starting the process as well, and I'm sure that's going to come down as well. So, and really, we really won't know what the final number is until the spring, once we have our final assessment numbers in and we know what our final costs are. I think this citizens' budget and the presentation budget are extremely helpful in laying out where our costs are. One area that I think, I think is really important, and I know Consul Wilkinson pointed out Repsol Place, but during strategic planning, the idea of how much mowing we do in our parks.
Yes.
And that is a huge cost to, to our community. So if we're looking at reducing costs, there, there's some areas there where it might, might help our budget. When you look at our staffing levels, we're very comparable to other communities our size, and no doubt we are going into our negotiations with our union, and we are going to be looking for a tightening of, of increases. And these are challenging times for everybody, including our municipality and the residents in our community. And I look forward to them providing the feedback with the citizens' budget tool, and I think that will help inform decisions moving forward on, on what we do in terms of service levels and the appetite for, for increases in terms of taxes. Thank you.
Consul Wilkinson.
Through the chair. I just really like to echo what the mayor said, because just in personnel on parks and civic facilities, we've had $138,000 increase from one year to the next. So I think somewhere it has to go down, whether we have less grass cut or what happens. It's just, most of personnel in all the departments is off, so hopefully we can get that cut.
Okay. I just have some comments on the presentation. I think it looks great. Thank you very much for that, Ms. Bittner. And I know you're trying to launch this, so just, sorry. A few things, and Consul Beyer made a few comments about that. I would love to see things like the Repsol Place highlighted in a more visual pull-out, so you're, you're aware of it. I don't know if that's possible.
Well, this is the first, the first time we have done this. Always things that we can do to improve.
Perfect. And especially like things like that, the, the photo radar. People are seeing that the photo radar provides us with, I think it was five RCMP officers. So just in a way, if there was a way on those individual pages, to just make those pop more and make them more just out there so people see it. And I don't know if it's a way to make this less wordy. Probably not. I don't know if there's a way you could use math to do it, but in the debunkers section, I just found that second paragraph really hard to understand. I found the presentation itself was well-written in the sense that it was easy for the general public to understand, but I think I had to read that paragraph a few times to understand it. So I don't know if there's a way that you could make that a little bit more reader-friendly for the general public.
I can look at that. Sorry.
And, and maybe not. Maybe that's just debunkers are not that easy to understand. That could be it. And other than that, for the actual presentation, I'm really excited for that to get launched and to get the feedback. I know that we're going to have lots of conversations, and that we're just at the start of this process. I also would like to see the 4.5% come down, but I also recognize that we are really fortunate and only have 1.9% in two years. And so sometimes when you are fortunate with that, that means that at one point we do need to play catch-up on our reserves. So thank you. Mayor Sahar.
Thank you, Consul Crey. Just one other point. At the end of the document, we have the map here with our proposed capital budgets for infrastructure. I think we need a little bit more detail around that, because if a citizen looks at that, they're probably not going to know what that actually means.
Just as a clarification on that, sorry, through the chair to, to the mayor. That's not actually part of the budget document. It was just something that you were asking about at the Budget Workshop, so I wanted to you to show you this at this point. I can bring that up now. It's a little blurry up there. It was just to give council an idea, a visual of where those are actually happening. So we have up on 18th Ave here, from 48th Street to the cul-de-sac. Seventh Ave, there's some work at Kinsman Park, and all the way from 52nd to 48th, and then over on 43A Street between the highways there. So they were the areas that Mr. Solomon was talking about at the Budget Workshop.
And I believe he's also looking at by the independent grocers dealing with.
If, if, if funds allow, yes, yes.
Consul Sarantin.
Through the chair to Steve, I believe. Is there going to be any attempt to condense this even further into a Facebook post with highlights or infographic or anything like that?
Yeah, one of the ways we could address making a pop or what have you, we can actually take portions of this and use them as separate posts and just say, just to highlight certain areas.
areas.
Ms. Sahar?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Through to Administration. So with the citizens' budget, is that can be available on the kiosks at the library and the other facilities?
Yes, it will be made available on the kiosks and also obviously through our website.
Okay, thank you.
We'll run to that.
I have another request. I don't know also if you could do this. Is there a way that you could add in here? I really like the individual taxation impacts. Is there a way to have a full circle with all the taxation impacts from the departments? Do you know what I mean?
I can look into that.
With, just so we can see.
It will delay the release of this document.
Yeah, so that there's actually the one big circle with 100% with the different departments. So people can see it.
We do have the little pie that show the percentage of each department.
Yeah, yeah, so I want those pies as a big.
So that's the percentage of the taxation required, not necessarily expenditures. So just that differentiation there between, this is a portion of the taxes that has been put towards this particular area.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. If that is possible.
The citizen budget tool does have pie charts on there for each person to see what the effect would be for them and how much they're paying towards those areas, but not one in the, at the moment that has the entire.
The entire. So you just see the department where it's actually coming from.
Okay.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. Any last comments? Thank you. This looks fantastic. Really appreciate it. All right, moving on to the financial disclosure policy. And it's you again, right, Ms. Bittner?
Yes, that's also me. We're just bringing this back. There was some discussion at an early meeting about the audit requirement. I mean, council was sort of asking a little bit about that and there was something about it that was niggling at me too, but I figured out what it is today. So what it is, is that all auditors are accountants, but not all accountants are auditors. So there's, is a distinction between the two. So the accountants answer to accounting standards, they're more, you know, the actual work that is done, the auditors are the ones that then come in and check that work. So there is a differentiation between the two. So what I'm suggesting is that with the policy, we had under there that on an annual basis, grant recipients will have a full financial audit completed by an independent, external professional financial services firm. I'm proposing we change that to auditing firm, so that they are actually getting people that have done audits and are qualified to do audits. So just that one little wording change actually just changes that a little bit and makes sure that that's actually a professional auditing firm that they're getting to do those audits for us.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Through the Chair. What auditing firms do we have in that? And I guess I don't quite understand when they have an accounting firm, I think.
I'm not exactly sure. I know, obviously, I know the town's one is obviously able to do audits.
Right.
I don't know about any of the others in town at this time, whether they are qualified to do audits.
Should we not look into that to see what options are available?
It would be up to the individual organizations to do that. We don't want to, this was one of the issues we had, was were we going to say you had to use our firm or that sort of get dilding into their own operations? We just need to make sure that the firm that they get is qualified to do audits and that's where the wording change came in.
But we're also telling them that then, that they can't use an accounting firm, which is common practice, I think, for most people and businesses to use an accounting firm. So I guess I question why it would have to be auditing firm and how available is it to our services right here in town?
This is what I'm asking of council, if you're wanting a full financial audit, then the best thing to do is say they need to get an auditing firm to do that.
Well, I think if someone has an actual financial audit. So I'd be quite happy to just leave it with a professional financing, financial services.
Counselor Swartson?
Through the Chair. I thought audit had a legal definition, but maybe it doesn't. Maybe, maybe there's different levels of audit. So I'd be in support of your new wording. I know several firms in town provide certified audits. So I'm not worried that we don't have the services here in that.
Counselor Bayer?
Through the Chair to Sarah. I'm also in support of the changing of the wording. Right now, I do have a question though, if that firm was doing bookkeeping services for them, which is probably maybe of like, I suppose it would be a higher rate if you had an auditor doing your bookkeeping, is it appropriate to still have them do that or would it also be recommended to have, or if maybe that's the word independent, if that's what that means?
Yes.
Separate from a bookkeeper?
Yes. Through the Chair to Counselor Bayer. That was the intent of that, was that so that someone who's not doing a lot of their accounting work isn't the same person checking that accounting work. So that's why the word independent was in there.
Okay.
So that they would get someone that was not one that they would be using for their day-to-day accounting.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Bevan?
Through to Chair of Administration. I have no problem with the auditing being up there because I know that there is other auditors in town here and that. And if you're a nonprofit organization and you rely on grants, if you get over $250,000 in grants, you have to have a complete full audit by the Canada Revenue Agency. And there is people in town that do that, so I have no problem with that being like the other auditors in town here for sure.
I'm also in support of that changing. I think the whole purpose of us putting that in there was that it was a formal audit. So I would like to make sure it is a formal audit and we have provided the additional funds to our grants to pay for that. So I do support that wording change. Do you have everything you need from us? Good?
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to community services, the memo for the youth council policy is up, you, Ms. Bayer?
Good evening, everyone. So through the Chair, we just made a few changes really that were requested by council. I thought we brought it forward. I'm going to ask you to go through the changes. Any questions?
Counselor Bayer?
Okay, through the Chair to Tanya. I'm the first here, quick on the gem, I guess. I did have a couple of questions. So on number four, four and then number two, it says the budget process on the reports that are made to town council as follows. What reports are they making on the budget process? I was drawing a blank reading that and I wasn't sure what that, what that meant.
Sorry, you're in four and then number four?
Four and then number two. So the reports are made to town council as follows and then one minutes, I understand that, and then the budget process. Which budget process are we referring to?
You know what, that was in the first one and it didn't come up, so now I'm wondering.
Perhaps I can speak to that a little bit. Perhaps it's indicative of, you know how in 2019, we had to place an amount for youth council, supporting youth council? I think that that's what, that's telling us, is that one of the reports that's going to come to council in respect of the youth council, that's a mouthful, is going to be their annual budget asks.
Oh, okay. All right.
I'm not sure if you would agree.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense, yes, because it is $10,000 to run the youth council as proposed.
Okay, all right, yeah, just the way that that was.
Thanks for that, that makes sense.
Okay, the way that was heard.
Through the Chair to you, Tanya.
I thought we did discuss that about the budget, instead maybe have observe instead of engage because I don't really think the youth can make a decision on our budget, but they certainly can have an input or observe the budget process more than doing the budget.
Could maybe the wording just be changed on that?
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
So just the budget process with regards to the youth council?
Do you, like, I just really put in such as budget as an example, but we don't have to be that specific. It was really.
I prefer we didn't because really on the town budget, like, it's us enough to make that decision, really.
If I just remember correctly, the comments last time when we went through this is that we did want council to be, or your youth council to be engaged in processes. So do you guys have certain ones that you'd rather be involved in and certain ones not? Or how, or how do you want me to change that to?
Yeah, I don't think we need to be specific. I think that if there is opportunities in which the youth want to provide input, they certainly can do so. I really like, I watched the conversation about this when I was not at that meeting and I really appreciated all the points of view that council put into this document. I'm really excited about this. And I really like to see, I really like the section where they're actually going to be involved in volunteering in our community and providing that. I think it's so important as many of our nonprofits struggle to get new volunteers involved. So I just don't, I don't think we need to be too prescribed in what we're asking them. I think as this process rolls through, they'll find their opportunities to provide that input, whether that's the budget or whatever. But at the end of the day, like Counselor Wilkinson says, it's up to us to make those decisions.
Counselor Bevan?
Through the Chair, Administration. Yes, since this was made known that we're going to go with the youth council, people are excited about it and that too and that. But I got a lot of questions asking us, why are we going to give them a $10,000 financial implication even though it's going to be offered to go to secondary school or whatever and that? Why not a trial run to see if anybody's going to volunteer for sort of doing that? And I listened to them and that and they said, example, when the youth council came and sat here, the youth came and sat here, done a presentation to us, asked for help to come out and pick up needles or garbage or whatever and that, then the youth would get involved with us. I think there was what, maybe four or five youth that came out that sat at this table and 20 adults came out. There was more adults than the youth that came out. So the youth didn't even show up. But now the feedback I'm getting is we're paying for them to come out, even though they may get a scholarship and they may not get it. If they decide not to go, they're not going to get it, but we're providing lunch and everything else. And they're saying, everybody volunteers free of charge, why not start there, give it a trial run for a year, see where it's going to go, if it takes off, then maybe we do something and that. And I've been asked, you know, you take this $10,000 out of your budget, it'll bring your rates down again and stuff like that too. So I'm listening to the people and that's what they're telling me and that. It's nice we're going to do something with the youth, it's long overdue, but maybe this is not the way to go, you know. I'm open to feedback or get beat up or whatever, but no problem, so.
Okay, through the Chair to Counselor Bevan. The reason that that was put in place and I think was agreed on last time, just saying that to have incentive and to have people come and to be committed to the process so that you don't have them signing up and leaving and then at the end of the day, you really don't have a good council in place. And so really it was an incentive program to encourage them to stick with it. But certainly not my decision.
Counselor Bayer?
Through the Chair to Tanya. Another question I had was on number five, diversity details, and then if you go down to, I guess, B, it says the participation in the coordination and implementation of a town council meeting at the respective school of the youth council member. Does that mean that we'll be hosting a town council meeting at one of the schools?
Yeah, that's, well, my court does.
Oh, okay. And it would be set up to do that, like a regular town council meeting?
Yeah, that's.
Oh, okay.
That was also in the last one. If you guys want to remove, we can, but.
The school division has got that, have their employees in schools, yeah?
Oh, I just, I must have not, I must have overlooked that one. And then one more question, I think one or two more. You have all the different activities listed that they can volunteer for. It says the mandatory attendance of one council meeting between November and April. Why do we limit just between those months? Why not, why don't we extend that further out to the summer? I was just curious why it was like the tighter timeframe when it goes from October to September, but the mandatory attendance of the meeting was only November to April?
We can extend that too.
Oh, okay. And then is there any way that if there's some of the volunteering activities that we can like list roughly what months they are in? Because like when I was kind of like just looking at the dates myself, quite a few of them seemed to be in the summer and there were some that were all year round, but then it kind of puts it heavy into the summer.
I think, you know, through the Chair, Counselor Bayer, I think it's really difficult, you know, to put timeframes on these sort of things and that is when we are the heaviest and the most need of volunteerism. That's when most of our activities are. You know, and then we also kind of have the little disclaimer in there that really anything that community development identifies and we could even be looking at things such as helping connect with staffers or whatnot. Like it's, this isn't, this is really a town of Edson-based activity list, but it certainly doesn't limit it to this. So, you know, really if the youth were even to find their own suggestions on where they want to contribute in community, I think we'd be very open to that.
Okay, yeah, I'm fine with that. I was just thinking if I was a youth and looking to sign up and if I read the policy and, you know, I knew what my own time commitments were, then knowing what the general time commitments might be, you know, if, you know, things are in the summer or generally in spring, then it would, you know, I could weigh that out, I suppose, right, with what my commitments were, if I was looking at that, that's all. So, thank you.
Just a few comments myself here. I think I really liked the add-in of the number four to engage, sorry, under the town council representative role, to engage the youth in the process and such as the budget. And then I think maybe for that number four, that budget process, if we could just add some clarity to that, that it's about their budget for their, for the youth council, if we could somehow just add more to that so that it was a little bit clearer about what we're saying with that budget process. And then I would just comment that Counselor Bevan, you and I are speaking to completely different people because I have had the exact opposite where people are really excited and I think it's great to have an incentive. We all have an incentive to sit here and I don't know why we would not expect the same for a youth council if we're trying to really get them engaged in the process. And I don't think that what we're saying is a huge amount. And we are asking, a part of the process is not that you just show up, but we're asking them to volunteer. There's quite a things, and I mean, yes, you're volunteering for this committee, but then we're also putting stipulations on you on what you have to do, which is not typical of a volunteer role. You're not given stipulations. So in a sense, yes, it is a volunteer role, but it is also a role that we're giving specific tasks. And so I think when you give specific tasks like that, it's not unrealistic to ask for a little bit of an incentive, which is actually quite low if you look at it.
And also through the Chair, I think, I agree, I think it's really important to have that incentive and unfortunately, I just lost my train of thought.
It'll come back to you.
Counselor Swartson?
Through the Chair, I'm also in support of the financial incentives included here and primarily because they're not a check that they just put in their, in their pocket. This is for post-secondary education and I think it's great that we're encouraging these, these involved youth to go on and further education. I think that's a great, great way to use the money.
Ms. Sahar?
Yeah, and I think one of our, through the Chair, I think one of the ideas behind this is to get a good cross-section of youth involved and we probably will see some more at-risk youth or some youth that are coming from more difficult backgrounds or may not have a lot of financial resources. Even the little bit that we are providing, I think it's $100, pretending a minimum of five meetings throughout the year is, is a little bit that we can do to support their post-secondary if they choose to go down that road. And I think it also will help encourage people to take ownership of their community and maybe encourage these kids to return home and use their education that they find in post-secondary back here in Edson instead of, you know, taking that knowledge back to the city, which is something that we were always challenged with. At the end of the day, that's not a huge sum of money in terms of our budget and tax increases as we'll see through the citizens' budget, but we hope people will have the opportunity to have their say and certainly would be happy to hear anybody else's input on that.
Counselor Bayer?
Through the Chair to Tanya. One more question was regarding the financial incentive for the budgeted for bursaries. I'm in favor of it. I think that an incentive is necessary. We all get one as well. But how long are we going to hold that? So if someone graduates in high school, some people go right on the post-secondary, whatever form that may be, some people take a year off, is there anything, are we going to have anything in there that says you have to use it within X amount of timeframe?
Through the Chair, we, we kind of left it wide open because of, at the age of 13, they could go on council, so they could actually have several years that this money would accumulate. they could go on council. So they could actually have several years that this money would accumulate. So this money would be placed in reserve. Now, I don't know if we should place a cap on it saying within X amount of years of graduating high school that they need to use it. That's something we could consider. And then the other comment that came back to me finally was that, you know, in the first year, I know Council Bevan has suggested, you know, maybe not paying the first year. And, but I think Scott and I both talked about that being a really important year for the incentive because we want really engaged youth because they're sending it out as we hold it goes on, right? And getting terms of reference in place and deciding how it's gonna function. And so, that's what I was thinking the first year. I think it's really important to get those engaged youth that are gonna stick with it.
Your Sarah?
Yes, through to Tanya. Does White Court do a bursary program?
Yes, it do.
Okay.
Any other comments? Do you have what you need from us?
Actually, going back to Council Bevan, I don't think that, back when we talked about them being part of the budget process, I don't think that that specifically pertained to their $10,000 budget. This was more about engaging them in town process. So I just wanted to clarify that before we moved on, because I think we're seeing two different terms on that.
And could then the wording about it be, cause it's supposed to be reports are made to town council as follows. So could it be instead of the budget process in saying, giving feedback on the budget or?
Three. So under four, it would be specific to theirs, but under three?
And we already have that in there. Under three, do we not? Yeah. Well, that's the town council's representatives' role.
Yeah. So under number three, under the town council reps' role, you guys wanna engage removed and to say observed, is that correct?
I think a couple of different things.
That's the town councillor's responsibility.
It's our job to engage them.
It is.
In the conversation. That's our role.
In the conversation, this saying in the budget, it's not the same conversation.
But this is under the town council representative role. So it's telling, it's our job to engage them in that conversation.
In the conversation, that's fine. But the other part, it's saying in the budget. I don't want it there.
So am I removing such as budget? Does that clean that up?
Yeah, I think you need to remove that. I think it's, it's the town council representative's role to engage with them and to, to, you know, educate them on, on the processes that we follow. And that may or may not include the budget process. And I think if you put a specific example, that becomes all of a sudden a focus.
Council Shorten?
I would support adding a bullet in section two that, that the council's role is to comment on any specific policy or initiative that the town specifically asks for input on. Maybe, maybe I'm over, like, you guys can disagree with me, but for instance, if we, if we have a, if we have a budget or we have a new policy that we want them to comment on, maybe we specifically ask in writing, we would like them to comment on it. And that's their role. And then that kind of clears up, we don't really need so much of that in section three. And section 4.2 could be specifically create your own budget and present it to council for request.
Council Bevan?
Through the Chair, to Tanya. So because this is a policy and it's setting the lines of everybody's responsibilities, perhaps on number four, if the headline of that was worded differently and if it said administration reports that are made to town council are as follows, I think that just clears that up a little bit for me anyways, regarding that budget process as well. That it's not the youths making that. Cause that's, that, if I'm not correct, right, that's administration? Oh, no. I guess that's, because then you have the council reports. I guess if you write the administration reports or something, because the youths aren't making the budget. Does that make sense?
I actually think that might confuse the issue even a little bit more.
Yeah, no, I just looked at the other one.
Because in number four, we're talking about the different types of reports that are going to be presented to town council. And if you look at three, the town council rep reports during the council report section of committee of the whole. So it is not an admin-only section.
And I, I think the confusion there is that, I think that budget process, like Council Shorten said, I think if that's in there, it is presenting their budget, what they would like to do with it or if there's changes. But I do think that the youth council role, as you had said, mentioned there, Council Shorten, is that's where it could be added, is they're giving feedback and participating in, you know, current agenda items. The budget, the policies, bylaws, any of that would be their role to give feedback. I think it's that that budget process seems to be in the wrong spot. And it would be more inclusive in the youth council's role is to provide feedback on that ish, any issues going on.
So just feedback has requested by council?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I like that. That gives us a chance to say.
Mr. President?
I clearly see this as a mechanism for council to gauge youth and find out what they want. I think this is an opportunity for council to say, youth of Edson and surrounding area, what would you like to see in your park spaces and your recreation spaces? How can we adjust the budget to encourage you to do something positive? I think this is, and when you look at two dash one, to, you know, the youth council role, to engage community youth to accurately represent youth perspectives. I think this is a collective of youth. We're hoping to get a broad cross-section so that we can go to them and say, what would you like to see here? What do you like about this? What can we change to encourage youth or to encourage participation in programming? I think it's a really good opportunity to do that.
Thank you. Any other further comments? Did that clear it up for you?
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, moving on to municipal parks, public use bylaw. This is you, Jim.
All right, so I guess.
Scott, take it away. He's carried the load on this file from the beginning, so.
All right.
He's well versed in.
Yep, so I guess, yeah, so basically, it was a while ago when I was last here talking about this, but yeah, a few changes were requested. And I'll just bring up right here, just kind of basically a presentation that just kind of summarizes the very basic changes that we're making. So obviously right here, they're highlighted in red, but yeah, so we're just gonna go through this, it'll highlight and just kind of summarize everything. So as we can see right here, municipal parks, public use bylaw. So the major changes, if you look at section one, basically, so I just kind of took a look at Unisite and zoning and just places that are affected differently. So basically, we found the best way to kind of classify where things are is it talks about parks and facilities. So we just kind of cleared it up to make sure it was kind of hidden in the target spaces there. There's a few excluded, like the Galway Station Museum or the Pavilion or Stages, Ten Yell Park or Repsol Place, because they already have separate mechanisms in place for booking just because their nature's a bit different. So everything here is kind of included that way. We created an application form, so that's appendix A. So basically, there's some information people need to fill out before the event. In a way, it will kind of work as a permit to an extent where they'll pay for it to submit this and fill out their information. An establishment of fees and timelines. So that's in the fees and rates file. And I have a slide after this that talks about that. Then also clarification of elements that need further approval permissions and who to approach regarding those. For example, some things require Alberta Health Services approval or RCMP. So just kind of clarification of those things. And then also just clarification of finance, just putting a number on that. So just kind of for your, an FYI right here, this is what the fees will be. So I just kind of took this, doing some research of some other municipalities and parks. And so the insurance value is there. So private events, we're kind of defining that as events where it's not open to everybody, like it's just being held in a park space. It's for a private group. Public commercial events, that's an event where people would be maybe selling something. So if a market or something was set up, then a public not-for-profit event, those are fee exempt. And then to deal things where it's gonna be very large groups, we're putting a bit of a bigger damage deposit on there. And another thing as well, let's say, you know, you have a five-year-old who wants to have a birthday and a party in the park. We've talked about it before, but it says that basically in 2.10, the CAO is designated, is authorized to grant the use of public parks and facilities by individuals or groups where there's no conflict with existing bookings and such as an ad hoc amateur nature is deemed to be indefensive, is not amplified, and is intended for personal entertainment or the enjoyment of small groups of friends, family, or park visitors. So if you're having a small event right here, it's not necessarily going to be impacted by this. Right here, so who says you can do what? So this just kind of clarifies the external agencies that are involved with the providing approval. So just give you a second to look at that. Just kind of, I find it's just easier to clump it together this way. Just let me know when you're done and ready for me to move on to the next. Good afternoon. All right, so a little humor from Parks and Rec. Can you watch that? Questions?
Council Shorten?
Through the Chair, on section 2.9, that surprised me, just the wording says the applicant will provide proof of these other approvals. And I think it should just say, just simply say if applicable. So you don't need all of these approvals if they don't apply.
Okay, so just kind of put in there that it is conditional if they need it.
Very.
Okay.
Mayor Sarah?
Yes, through to Administration. I've got some concerns with this. I think that we certainly don't want commercial activities in our parks. I know that there was a case recently in which a local park was being used for business purposes, waking up residents nearby early in the morning. And I think that was, I think one of our councillors could attest to that. And I think that is certainly something that we want to ensure that we have some control over. I am very concerned that by putting a policy in place like this, we are gonna be discouraging neighborhoods, community to get together informally, to use our park spaces, you know, whether that be, you know, the block parties, for example. Are they gonna be, have to pay a hundred dollar fee in order to use our parks? One of the great things about parks is that they're free to use and they're available for anybody to use. So I certainly think for commercial purposes or for larger gatherings where there could be additional maintenance afterwards, where, where town staff or the Town of Edson may incur some cost, that we certainly should be doing something or could be doing something. But when it comes to private events, you know, you got a birthday, you said birthday party, or we have a family reunion and it's a beautiful day and you wanted to go down to the park, and then is somebody gonna make a complaint and then you're gonna have to pay a hundred dollars? That doesn't make any sense to me. These are public spaces, we should encourage people to use them. So I guess I need some clarification on that, because at this point, I can't support moving forward with this.
Yeah, so actually.
Okay, okay, Council Wilkinson?
Again, the violation you're talking about was just too early in the morning, 5:30. Do you mean there are restrictions on the park already?
Yeah.
And I guess I just wondered, why did this policy come out? I just think it's such a hard policy. Again, that 2.9, I look at it and I think, if we would want to go and get permission from the Alberta Liquor Control Board and RCMP and everything to go and be in a park, what about the schools that use Kinsman Park all the time? Like, they go, their little field trips are there in June, do they have to pay extra here? Or it should be reciprocal use, but they'd have to notify someone they're coming. And again, this tent covering over 10 square feet? If you go up to White Court, they're lazy wherever they're, just many, many people are putting up little tents in the day and cooking their little barbecues and doing everything. And a lot of them are over 10 feet. And I mean, people seem to be having fun, enjoying themselves. I think we can sometimes just rule ourselves right out of existence. And like our mayor says, our parks should be welcoming. I really do believe. Too many restrictions.
Council Bevan?
Through the Chair, to Administration. In my, when I was reading this, I thought that when we look at something like Kinsman Park, that it seems really restrictive and then 10 square feet is a very small tent. I was kind of under the impression that this would apply to like Vision Park, you know, or some bigger parks that, like if, you know, when the Kingsmen have their ball terms. That, you know, in my mind, when I read this, like it, it seems like it applies to that type of a setting. But when, you know, and I think there is a wording in there, you said 2.1 or 2 about the families and the friends meeting up?
That's in 2.10.
Oh, 2.10, okay. That that's just highlighted that it's, you know, that if we're not, you know, intending on charging family or friends or, you know, a small family reunion or a get-together, then that, it doesn't necessarily apply to that. Because, you know, when you read about the parks, especially when we add in a Kinsman Park, I don't think we should be charging people to use that park for, you know, their three-year-old's birthday party. But, but the 10 square feet isn't a very big tent at all. And that maybe if, I guess if there was some disclarification on which parks that this is, you know, ideally intended for or what, what events that kind of made it, you know, brought this about.
So, yeah, through the Chair, so we'll just kind of start going from, is it here? Going around? Yep. So, yeah, no, I can definitely understand where you're coming from, where it's just kind of, it can definitely appear kind of a bit non-encouraging. And that's, I guess, in the sense where it'd say public not-for-profit events, how it is be exempt. It is something we can look into a bit more, just kind of getting, I guess, better definitions around what these events are. Just to make sure that it is a free community thing that it won't be introduced. So I think a lot of it will come down to how we define those things. So we can definitely look into that a little bit more. And, yeah, and I do understand where you are coming from, where something like this can appear to kind of scare people off. I, as I address, Council Wilkinson, it still kind of helps to give some context around it as well. But one of the main reasons why we are, we're wanting to do this bylaw is, for example, let's say a company sets up a bouncy house in the park and starts charging people $5 ahead to come in and use it for commercial things like that. And they're kind of, you know, preventing other people from using the park because they're taking up so much space. It's more so to regulate bigger things like that. And it's not like we're gonna be putting this bylaw out and posting it and people are gonna know everything. It's gonna be more so if a situation like that does happen, we have to enforce it. So it's more so for big events that are coming in that aren't doing any, getting any permission or anything, then that means the town can be liable. It also means that, how would I put it? It can be a public safety issue as well if it's not regulated. So it's more so to manage these bigger events like that. And, yeah, I guess did that kind of answer yours as well, what I said to both of them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. President?
We do have a lot of requests and a lot of them, we don't hear about until Monday about what happened in the park, where somebody went and set something up, really subjected the public via the Town of Edson to a lot of liability if something went wrong. Our intent is to protect the public interest and to ensure that we're not held liable for something that we didn't know about. We don't want to discourage anything from taking place. We just want to put a mechanism in place that allows us some oversight and allows us to, an opportunity to say, yeah, it's a good idea, we support that. Or no, it's not a good idea because of this. Or did you think about that? Did you talk to this group? Did you talk to Alberta Health Services? This is important stuff that you need to cover in order for this event to take place.
Council Shorten?
Through the Chair, am I inferring correctly that a private event, they would have exclusive use to that park? And they could?
At any point, nobody can shut down a park and prevent people from coming into it.
Is that clear in here?
Um, yeah, I believe in section, yeah, 2.1, it says, public parks and facilities are available for use to all individuals, organizations, and groups as per the regulations described further in this policy. So essentially, right there, we could define it a little bit more.
I would say regardless of what, what permit you have, public is always insured.
Okay, absolutely.
And then secondly, maybe on that third line there, public not-for-profit events, maybe you could just have a minimum size there. So I don't know what that number would be. For instance, under 12 people or something, you don't need to show liability insurance. You don't need a permit at all. I don't know what that number should be, but for these smaller family get-togethers, we don't need to see approval insurance.
No. Sorry, like in a lot of times we've owned, if you wanna have a picnic in Kinsman Park and have a birthday party and all this sort of stuff, go for it. The issue arises for us when you bring in a private contractor along with that birthday party, then the municipality incurs risk that could be associated to the operation of that business attached to that birthday party. Not gonna go into what that could be, but we have run into situations where they didn't have insurance, they didn't ask permission, they just set up and expected that it was their right to do that in a town park.
Council Johnson?
Through the Chair, just where would show and shine go in that chart? You know, we just sort of approve it each year, it seems. And I don't know what event. you put it under.
I'm confident it would be a public not-for-profit event.
Okay.
And they would have their own insurance through the organization.
Yes, and then they do their own cleanup, et cetera, if there's damage.
Awesome group, they look after things, there's too cleanup to do whatsoever after those guys are there.
Right, yeah.
My comments would be a lot of the same concerns, just making sure, I'm not sure at its current state that it's clear who it's meant for. So right now, when I first read through this, and I think maybe in the details it's there, Scott, but when I first read through this, it feels like it's for all. I don't like that idea of like, anybody could do it, but they have to get approval first, because I think that does take away that whole point of wanting them to just go out on a Saturday and enjoy the parks. But I do think for sure, if it is a commercial event, or I do think if it's a publicized, even if it's a not-for-profit, if it's a publicized event, especially if you're handing out, giving out free food and such, there are a lot of risks associated with that, and there's a lot of rule-breaking going on in other organizations, not ours. There are rules about having to have certain stuff done before you can do that. So I do think we need to have it there. I just think right now, it seems a little harsh and maybe not really clear on who, and maybe that's just some of the wording.
Mayor Sahar.
Yeah, just further to the comments that were made, I certainly agree that if you're, if there's a commercial business coming in to support some of these events, that we do need to have some processes in place, but I will not support anything that is going to be seen from the public as not allowing them to use their parks when it comes to personal use or family use. So I think we really need to work on the language in this document to really specify this is about commercial entities and addressing the liabilities from bringing those folks in.
Counselor Webber.
Go ahead, Scott. No, you go ahead. No, I agree with Mayor Sahar here on that, too. I'm glad we're putting something in place, but I think also, we do this, we put a proper signage, and that, too, around their parks and stuff like that, so they know a little bit what's going on with numbers, they can get ahold of and stuff like that. I believe also, like the Vision Park there, you know, signage has got to go up there so that come springtime, not everybody's using it, they're going to get out to erect the shale and stuff like that, it's going to cost a big dollar to put money back into fixing up and adding. But I think we have to do a lot of the work on this. I'd like to see this come back to community at a whole again. May take a couple of times for us to do it. I'd like to see it come back again, and with the different types of wordings on it.
Sure.
Chair, Counselor Bevan, we just recently met with user groups for Vision Park and the soccer fields as well, and we're in the process of creating some better policy and also better fee structure along with that, that's consistent with, again, other areas that I mentioned earlier, not just in our particular region, but around the province as well, just to see what they're doing, how they're managing their infrastructure, how they're protecting their infrastructure. So we want to make sure that we just don't waste taxpayers' money and spend a lot of money getting our diamonds and fields up to snuff, then all of a sudden, something happens and they get trashed, and we've got to spend a lot of money and time getting them back up again.
Thank you. Counselor Brier.
Through the chair to administration. So I'm just looking for a little bit more clarity on this, and I guess this would, so I went to, I had a friend, they had a birthday party out at Wilmar Park, and they had food, and I don't think they had a hand-washing station, but they hired a face painter to come out. So what does that dynamic look like? Like, does a face painter typically carry three million dollars comprehensive general liability insurance? Like, is that a normal thing for face painters to carry as like a small home-based business type of a thing?
Yeah, through the chair, definitely not. And once again, like, I mean, we could spend all of it, we might make some big long things specifying like this and this and that, and like, this person used to have this much and that much, but there's a certain point where it just needs to come down to our discretion.
Okay.
Where it just kind of, where it, once again, two point ten kind of covers that, where is it, if it's inoffensive, if it's intended for personal entertainment or a small group. And personally, I feel that would fall under that if it was a small group. So there's some things where simply it just comes down to the town needs to execute their discretion on it, so.
Okay, so then my friend should have just went, you know, if, you know, once we pass the bylaw or something like it, then if that was in there, then they would just go to the town, say, I'm having a little birthday party out here.
Yeah.
About food, I have a face painter coming out, but it's, you know, just to do the ten kids that are invited, and then they would be exempt from paying a fee or getting the liability coverage in place?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
I guess just through the chair, on top of that, even if people are unsure, we could maybe change it such way really could, consult with us before, just to double-check, and if they're just going to give us a quick, hey, this is what we're doing, they might not have to go through the whole process at all.
Right.
So if they are unsure, they can always talk to us, but, yeah, things they don't want, just kind of kids' birthday party, those kind of things.
Right.
You don't really need to worry about them too bad, I'd say.
Okay.
Yeah, I would like more clarity on that.
Good.
Are we done? Move on?
So just, I just want to get some clarity here as well, but I guess one thing is, so just basically better clarity over who this affects, so it's more definitions on the people that are affected by this and the types of events that are. Okay, sounds good. Thank you very much.
Through the chair, I do like Counselor Sorenson about the wording on that two point nine, that may not be so much of a, I think that would scare anybody off.
Our intent with that, if I might, is just so that people are aware that depending on the type of event they are having, there are legislative requirements that they have to follow by it. That's purely just for their information.
Great, thank you.
All right.
Moving on. Edson Seniors Transportation Society, you're up again.
Okay, so as you recall in our retreat, where we discussed various things, this was one of the topics that came up, and I was asked to prepare a memo to this effect and open for discussion.
Questions? Counselor Bevan.
Through the chair, administration. On their currently budgeting sixteen thousand dollars a year here and that for fuel costs and everything else, did they use that up, the whole amount? Do they ever come back, ask for anything more from us?
I haven't seen a request for more money. Generally speaking, their bills fall within that amount. There's the additional budget that we do give them as a grant through community services, so that's why the number goes up to twenty-eight thousand.
Twenty-eight, yeah, here.
But with the price of fuel going up and the carbon tax, I'm not so sure how that's going to impact them.
Counselor Brier.
Through the chair to Jim Midas. So have we talked to the Edson Seniors Transportation Society yet regarding having a council member sit on their board? Or is this like, I'm not sure what this is asking, actually. If we're like sending them a letter, like, I'm not sure what this is, what we're asking on here.
So through the chair, Counselor Brier, I have had preliminary discussions with their president on this issue. I've been unable to meet with, since, to talk about this further, but they are expecting some sort of correspondence from council requesting this happen.
Mayor Sahar.
Yeah, through the chair, through Mr. Destel. I think this is really important. I think that transportation issues are becoming a bigger, bigger issue within our community, medically at risk, folks that are looking for transportation. And I think this is really important for us to have better knowledge of what the challenges are, and for us to look at a broader picture for our community and see where we can provide the additional supports that might be required with an aging population, with, you know, some of the challenges that we have within our community. You know, losing Rayhoun, that sort of thing, has had an impact as well. So I certainly would like us to see us move forward. It's a vital service for our community. I do get feedback on it, and sometimes I don't have the answers to the questions people are asking me, so I think it's important that we have a rep, even if it's just to observe, to bring information back, and to keep us better informed of some of the challenges they normally facing.
Counselor Webber.
Through the chair to Jim, is this Manial Transportation Society or something like the bus services, this is different, okay, I'm like, thanks?
Yes.
Okay, because I know nonprofits give donations to that, and that's the seniors transportation type thing as well, at Parkland Lodge, but I can't remember the name of it.
Counselor Bevan.
Through the chair, Jim. I also agree with Mayor Sahar here and that, and, you know, the public lots, I have had feedback that they know that we are looking at putting a council rep on there, and they actually are happy that we are putting somebody on there. I think it'll also solve some of their problems with what they can or cannot do, and we can answer some of those problems for them that help them out in the future here and that. And they are actually looking forward to whenever we can get together with them and do it.
Jim.
I think this group is vital for transportation of seniors and people who need that sort of service in Edson. With the impacts we're seeing in not-for-profit societies and groups in the area and other areas, we really need to step up and support this group as best as we can to ensure that they survive and that they remain viable.
Counselor Sorenson.
Through the chair, I just want to echo Mayor Sahar's comments. I think this is a critical service. I would like, I do support the council rep on it because it is such a critical service, and I hope that through that involvement, we can actually expand their scope. I know they already include support for people with disabilities, but the whole discussion around transportation needs in our community could be dealt with through this group if it had, if it had more input from this council, I guess, and from the public in general. Thank you.
If I may, through the chair, check counsel. I think Mr. Deracott had also mentioned, just in that initial correspondence, to ESTS is asking, you know, in the meantime, to have a council representative observing, and then seeing if there would be some way for them to make provisions within their bylaw that a council rep then sit on the board going forward, but that we have an observing member until that time. Is that okay with council?
Sounds good. And I would just echo what has been said. I think it's really important, and I also get asked a lot of questions, and I think it would just help with some of that clarity, and then to expand the scope, because I think it is really important, I think it's a need. Okay, do you need anything from us?
I think that's good. I think that allows us to prepare some correspondence on behalf of council. Of course, we get to Mayor Sahar for his approval, and we can send it in.
Thank you. All right, moving on. All right, we do not have anything else other than questions from the media and public regarding items from this committee of the whole meeting.
Yes, I have a question, and I don't have to address it, but you're struggling with your budget of four point five percent and looking at avenues to reduce it. And I would caution you that the direction you're taking right now is probably going to put you in the same position in a few years down the road as you find yourself right now. The reason you're in this position now is because of two bad decisions made on two previous budgets. And if you do it again, and you start cutting services and supporting your community, you're going to pay for it in the future. So I would think that if you've got as much money in reserves as you have, I think you should really give it a serious look at going to your reserves and supporting your services and the employees you have working for you, because I can see this being a huge issue for you down the road.
Do you have a question? And this, just a reminder, the Citizen tool will be launched tonight, and definitely go on there and give some feedback on there, too.
I'm sure you will.
Perfect, thank you. Any other questions? All right, if there's no further questions? Oh, sorry.
I guess one question I'd like to bring to your attention, as you realize, we're going to be having a new lodge, so we're going to have a lot more people in there, so you're going to see that our Parkland Lodge aspect through the Evergreen is going up quite a bit, and I haven't heard any really recognition on the aspect, number one, changing the garbage system neither, two, and that was a cost-saving, too. So, I mean, all these things sort of mountain up, and I mean, when you look at your assessment and that, a lot of us won't be able to live here because of the higher taxes. So I'd really stress that you really look at this and utilize what we have and streamline a lot what we have. Do we need all the staff that we got? You know, that's another thing, because we've got a lot more staff than we had years back, and we haven't grown that much.
Okay, thank you. Just a reminder, it's questions, if we have any feedback. It's not a public hearing, so is there any questions? All right, thank you. If not, then can I get a motion that we adjourn the meeting? Counselor Bevan? All of them, Bevan. Thank you.